Welcome to the, I'm not sure what number meeting it is.
Oh.
The 12th meeting.
It's on the agenda.
The 12th meeting, I don't see it. Oh, there it is. The 12th meeting of the Milton Planning Board for fiscal year 2015. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. And why don't we go around the table and introduce ourselves? We've got a new face here, I'm glad to say. And we're missing an old face, but he'll join us soon, I think.
Which way do you want to start, Ed?
Either way.
Ed Duffy, member. Mike Kelly, member.
Tim Czerwinski, Assistant Plan Planner.
Emily Martin, Ed Duffy, Planning Board.
Brian Ferris, member.
Emily Ennis, member.
All right. We don't have any past minutes to approve because we have approved all the minutes that have been presented to us.
The tent is almost done.
We're going to meet again on January 8th, and then again on January 22nd, and again on February 12th. And the places of these meetings will be, they're all here. They're all here, down in the basement of Town Hall. Okay. On the agenda, there is an item about the discussion of the Governor Stoughton land and plans for its development, but the developer has indicated that they're not prepared to discuss any plans, so that item is not going to, that item is now scratched from the agenda. The next item is citizen speak. And are there any citizens out there who would like to speak to the board about something that they consider of interest, or of relevance, or of importance? Or anything else, for that matter? All right. Seeing no citizens, we will launch into what's known as an approval-not-required plan of 1381-1383 Brush Hill Road. And Ms. McCetrick will walk us through this.
Good evening, everyone.
I see that.
Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Mary McCetrick, and I represent the applicant for this A&R lot approval request. And this is Barbara Piper, who is the owner of the lot. We're here to, first of all, give you, you have a plan that's up to date, except that there is a notation on this plan that isn't on the one that you have, so we have one large copy.
Okay, why don't you read, you can read the notation.
All right. Hold this here, but you can pass the small copy. Okay, very briefly, we were here, we were to be here several weeks ago. And that was very short notice for the neighbors. I think we turned our application in on a Friday, and the planning board was nice enough to immediately schedule us. But that was too fast for everybody who lived on the private way. They didn't really have notice about it. So we postponed the meeting, and we have had three weeks to talk to various neighbors, and have reached agreement with the neighbors that the lot, we would agree to a restriction on the lot, that it would be used for single-family development, and that would be a recorded restriction. So I'm going to pass around the form of that restriction, so every planning board member can see it.
This is what you sent me today?
It is. Did you already do it?
It's already been passed around.
Okay, so you all have copies of the restriction, and...
That may be for Ms. Duffy?
Some of them.
Okay, well, go ahead, and they're extra copies. And in addition, a smaller agreement has been reached, and both of these were initiated by the Landjemen's, who live at the end of Avenue A, the private way that this lot is on. They asked for an agreement between Mrs. Piper and themselves, that the new lot owner would be required to make a payment into a maintenance fund towards the cost of maintaining Avenue A, which is consistent with the 1912 recorded agreement that all the lot owners signed and recorded when this area was originally subdivided into six lots. And if you read the names on that original subdivision, it looks like, you know, the annals of Milton history. I mean, the names are well-known, old Milton names. So this was a very well-thought-out, detailed agreement as to how, what would be allowed, if you had an easement to use the way, what you would be allowed to do, and what your obligations would be. And the agreement, without going into too much detail, basically says that you, as a current owner, and any new lot owner, so any new lots formed that wanted access to the private way, would have to contribute prorata to the cost of paving the road. And initially, all the owners would have to contribute to the cost of installing utilities, wires, sewer pipes, that was all listed, and this is only in 1912. And the agreement also even says that the new owners who come in later were supposed to reimburse the original owners for the original cost of construction by putting money into a maintenance fund. So because that's in the original agreement, the Landjemen's wanted, and also because they just felt it would be fair, they asked that there be some funds put into a maintenance agreement to pay for, you know, sort of, to be there upfront to help maintain that piece of road that will now serve the new A&R lot, and the Landjemen's at the end. And Mrs. Piper has agreed to that, and you should have a copy of that agreement as well in front of you. So we have agreement on these two things. We've said that if the planning board approves the A&R lot, that we will record the restriction along with the plan, and that we will also record the agreement, although we're not asking the planning board to make that a condition of your approval. It's a private agreement, but it will be recorded. There is other history, I've given you documents that explain a little bit about this lot, and the fact that there's another A&R lot that was created here, you know, at this intersection in 1984, which went through litigation, ended up in the appeals court, and the lot was first approved by the Superior Court, and then that approval was affirmed by the appeals court. So I did include that case here. I mean, you know, and I've talked about that case with the neighbors, and I'm also aware that it's a fairly strong statement that the findings in the Superior Court were that this way was, created proper access to the lot, which is one of the key determinations you have to make, if it's a private way. Normally, you can't have frontage on a private way, but it is one of the three ways that you can establish frontage under the subdivision control law. And there may, you know, there could be ways that you could, you know, critique that. And, you know, in any case, Mrs. Piper is very eager to get approval of her lot now. She doesn't want to go through an appeal process. She wants the neighbors to support it. And three of the neighbors support it without any request for conditions. We have letters from them, and I think you've received the letters, but if you need them, I brought them tonight, and I can turn those into the secretary.
Oh, those that immediately...
Yeah, the three letters, the three letters of support are from the Schellers, who are right up here, from Peter Hicks, who is right here, and from, how do you pronounce it?
Tran.
Mr. Tran, who is right here. So they are all very close to this lot. The Landjemen's are up here, but they are on the private way, and they're at the end. And they're the only people that have been using this end of the driveway, the roadway up until now. So everybody, not everybody wanted this, but one person at least on the roadway wanted it, and we've agreed to do it. So we tried to do it in a good way.
So what does the notation on the plan say?
The plan, yes. And this, of course, can be changed if you don't like it, but this is why we only bring the plan tonight.
Attempt to like it.
It says, "approved December 30th, 2014, subject to a restriction executed by Barbara A. Piper, sole trustee of LNF Trust dated 2030-2014, and recorded here at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds." And you have the restriction in front of you.
Okay, planning board, any questions? Then I will entertain a motion that we authorize Mr. Clark to execute this plan as not requiring subdivision approval on behalf of the board.
Is that moved?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will be producing a Mylar plan, and that will have to be signed...
Just take it to Mr. Clark, and he will sign it, and you can take it off to the registrar.
Great, thank you very much.
Now, we're going to hear about our zoning. The zoning, or the non-existent zoning that's going to go to the Maytown meeting. Mr. Clark will handle this one.
We have, I had one that I wanted to bring forward, and that was to redo the town's zoning map. And after much research and discussion with the GIS director for the town, we're not going to make the Maytown meeting. So rather than get into the rush, 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 we're going to get it right and do it for October.
Right, with the other zoning articles, just where it should be.
So October will be all zoning?
All zoning.
And no zoning for May. Sounds good.
Any other zoning that has popped up that you know of? Any rumors around Town Hall about possible zoning?
The only one would be a reuse of the landfill access road, changing from landfill purpose to municipal purpose. That's a selectman article. Those are the only two that I'm directly associated with right now. There is something coming for the Swift Hat House, I just haven't figured it out yet.
Okay. Well, this is good. Now we're going to hear from the master plan chairman.
So my understanding is that the master plan came in today, oh, look, Bill's got a handicap to show. So there are going to be three volumes, thank you. This is volume one, which is the executive summary and the implementation plan itself. Volume two is all of the existing conditions report. We'll get that on an electronic copy. And volume three is a record of all of the public input. I believe, I heard it was about 600 pages, so we'll be getting that in an electronic copy as well.
What Emily has in front of her is volume one.
Yes.
There's a volume two, that's the exact same size. If you turn to the very back page of that, there's a CD in there.
Ah.
That CD has the complete plan on it.
So we should all be getting electronic copies this week? Yes?
I believe so.
Okay.
I do want to get, I know that the discussion was, do I want a copy of volume three? Yes, I want one copy of volume three.
Yes.
If it's 600 pages, I certainly don't ever want to have to take and try to reproduce that myself. They're having problems reproducing it, I can imagine what it will be.
Why are they having problems?
I think it's just the layout that they're putting together.
Yeah.
They have it, they have it available on the CD, they had problems getting it to print correctly.
Right.
So they'll give us a copy that's camera-ready for that final copy.
Yeah. And as a practical matter, volume one is the volume most people are going to be reading anyway, because it's the...
We're going to get some hard copies of that.
We are going to get hard copies of that, yes?
Because I have, if I'm going to review this, I need a hard copy.
So we will definitely, this week we'll have electronic copies. I'll work with Bill to see about hard copies, and the board will have, Alex and I were talking about this right before the meeting, the board will be able to review this over January, and we will be scheduling a public hearing in February, the first meeting in February, to discuss the master plan. So you've got homework to do over January.
But not yet, because you don't have the material.
No, we'll get it, it's, I've actually gone through the most recent copy of volume one. I had a few changes to make to it, and it is very comprehensive. So there's a lot of information in here, which is great, which is fantastic, it's just what we wanted.
The, when people read this, they're to do it with a critical eye, because they can actually, when push comes to shove in February, say, "I think we should change whatever it is."
This document is the document. It's done, it's complete, the consultant's work is done. However, we as a board should consider, in whatever acceptance we do, whether or not we want to add some additional information, some additional comments, possibly a prioritization from our point of view of what should be the most important things, or least important things, to look at over the next few years. But the plan is finished, it's just...
But the plan is...
This document is finished, I should say.
The document is finished, and the comments can be made, and then if the planning board determines that a particular comment is in order...
Right.
A change can be made.
Yeah.
So it isn't just pre-bed reading, it's something...
This is important, yes.
Something to be done.
And we'll be posting it on the town's website as soon, once we get everything together. So people should look out for that.
All right. It's now 6:45, and we are going to do a public hearing on a application for site plan approval at 556 Adams Street. And Ms. McCetrick, we'll let you, we'll let you make a presentation.
Thank you.
And Bill, on the microphone.
Whoever's walking around will take this with them, like Steve, eventually.
Okay, and we'll keep an eye on that microphone, because we do want people to be heard. Because we're being recorded and televised.
I'm Mary McCetrick, and I'm the attorney representing the applicants for this site plan review for a restaurant at 556 Adams Street. And I have with me tonight Steve Tadisco, who is the designer for the restaurant, Jeanne Falcone Schmidt, who's going to be speaking for the family and the business, and Greg Morris, who is the engineer for this plan. So with your permission, I'd like to ask them to speak as to certain aspects of the application, but I'll just introduce briefly, and then turn it over in turn to each one of these people who are here. So I have given you a memoranda, several memoranda, and one for this hearing tonight. So I just will restate that this is a renovation project to reuse space that used to be the East Milton Theater. This was a 660-seat theater. I've lived here for 40 years, I remember going to theater when we first moved here. But it has been an empty space for 30 years, I think. Java Joe's, which was a coffee house, occupied the front part of this space for a period of time, and then there was a fire, and after that, the space became vacant again, and has not been used since. There are businesses in the front of this building which are going to continue, they are being, I'd say, sort of buffed up, cleaned up. There's some work being done to bring the building up to code, and I believe a bathroom is being added to the barber shop. But the three businesses, the barber shop, the boutique, and the salon are going to remain. Falcone Properties is replacing the sidewalk in front of the building for the town, and when the time comes to do planting, they are going to replant the two trees that were taken down by the town before this work began. The restaurant itself will have a seating capacity, proposed seating capacity of 140 indoors and 20 outdoor seats. The plan that the applicants are putting before you tonight uses the existing building to house the restaurant. It does not change the footprint or the height of the building, it's a two-story building, as indicated on the plans. There are currently no windows on the sides of the back of this building, so new doors and windows will be added to the sides of the building, in order to let light into the restaurant, and also to make the building look much more attractive. The applicants have also purchased two adjacent lots on Church Street, where they intend to create a new parking lot with a 25-car capacity for the restaurant. An additional parking will be provided at the Falcone Office Building Parking Lot on Franklin Street, which has a capacity for 38 cars. Landscaping will be created on the sides and the back of the building, and around the parking lot. There is no landscaping now around the building. So at this point, that's a very brief description, but I would like to introduce Jeanne Falcone Schmidt, and she's going to explain the interest of the Falcone Companies in this property.
Good evening, members. I am Jeanne Falcone Schmidt, speaking on behalf of the Falcone family. My brother, sisters, and I were born and raised in Milton, and our father started our small family business over 50 years ago. We've been located in East Milton Square for the last 35 of those years. Like so many people in Milton, we grew up going to the theaters kids, and remember a time where there were lines around the block to get a seat at Stella's. The square was alive and vibrant with families and patrons. Those were good times for the square, and we believe that our project before you tonight will play a significant role in its revitalization. Before I get into our project, I'd like to clarify a few misconceptions about which properties we do and do not own in the square. We own the building and parking lot behind Abbey Park, where our company is headquartered. We also recently acquired the storefronts on Adams Street, which house the Milton Barber Shop, Sol Amateo, and B Boutique, and the attached Milton Theater building. We do not own the Starbucks building, Stella's, or Abbey Park. We have a month-to-month parking lease with Abbey Park, but that is our only relationship to that restaurant. Abbey Park agrees that our parking lease with them will be terminated in the coming months. We have invested millions in this theater project, but we feel our hometown is worth every penny. Our family always saw opportunity, actually, my father, always saw opportunity in rehabilitating the theater building, but he didn't have a chance to do so during his lifetime. We share his vision for rehabilitating this theater, and we are very excited to tackle this project and solidify part of our father's legacy here in Milton. As with all of our projects, we feel an obligation to do this right, and ensure that this is a project that our family and our entire community can feel proud of. We purchased the old Milton Cinema Building on June 16th of this year, and as soon as we were granted building permits for the Adams Street portion of the building, we began remodeling the facade with new energy-efficient windows and doors, and updating the three front businesses to ADA standards. At the same time, we are bringing back the look of this building to its original aesthetic to complement East Milton's small-town flavor. These updates are nearing completion, and have already enhanced the look of the building in East Milton Square. We feel the restaurant is the best use of the old theater space, which some residents now consider an eyesore. It has been mostly vacant since 2007, when Java Joe's, located in the front portion of the empty theater, had a fire and had to close. The main part of the theater has been vacant for 30 years, with little or no improvements and very little tax revenue for the town. A restaurant is a permitted use in a business district. It will mean substantial new property and meals taxes for the town in Milton. Meals taxes, which Milton adopted in April 2010, have increased from $20,000 in its initial year to over $152,000 this past fiscal year, totaling almost half a million in the last four years. And this additional restaurant will only add to this. A restaurant does not impact our schools or most other town services. We have the necessary parking to support our restaurant proposal at a two-and-a-half to one ratio. We have had meetings with neighbors, we have completed the stormwater report, the landscaping plans, the lighting plans, and addressed shielding the refuge container from neighbors. Probably the best factor of our project is that we are not altering the footprint, just revitalizing an existing business space in a business district. In fact, 44 square feet of exterior alteration, essentially one new window, is the only reason why we are here before you tonight. This project is a premier example of adapted reuse with an existing commercial district, and represents the type of smart growth development that is commonly accepted as best practice for municipal planning. We received many letters of support from Milton residents who stressed the need for more businesses in their town to not only alleviate the tax burden on homeowners, but to revitalize our business district and provide amenities for residents. We feel our restaurant proposal will not only boost revenue and create jobs and amenities for residents, but enhance the existing business by bringing renewed energy to East Milton Square. I'll turn it back to Marion, and thank you very much for considering.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to briefly explain the zoning framework for the proposal, but then I'd like to have Steve Tadisco speak, and our engineer speak. The zoning requirements for a restaurant in a business district are site plan review before the planning board, depending on the amount of work to be undertaken, and a hearing, and this is a total gut interior renovation of the space, so certainly more than 800 square feet of work is being done in the building, and a hearing before the Board of Appeals, in the case of a restaurant in a business district, to determine whether a special permit should be issued, declaring that parking provided is sufficient for the use. Restaurant use and parking, in and of themselves, are allowed uses, but in this case, the parking has to be separately ruled on by the Board of Appeals. We've already begun that hearing, and it's underway, there wasn't time for everybody to finish testifying, so that hearing was continued until January 13th, 2015. In the case of this building as well, the Board of Appeals also has to have a hearing, and they're doing it at the same time, as to whether to issue a special permit under Section 4 of the bylaw, to reconstruct a non-conforming building. This building is dimensionally non-conforming to the rear, where it has 16.1 feet rather than 20, that's the required clearance, and on one side, for a short distance, the side that's shared with the other Falcone building, where Starbucks is, where there's a short distance where it's only, there's only 3.6 feet of clearance. Our bylaw's kind of unusual, because in the business district, if your building comes right up to the lot line, it's conforming. Otherwise, it has to be six feet away from the lot line. So in between those, when it has that less than six feet, it's non-conforming, and so that requires a special permit as well. At its hearing, the Board of Appeals will be responsible for determining how much off-street parking is required for the project. And while the number of parking spaces is not a subject for consideration tonight, I want you to know that the planning board, that this project's proposed parking is at a ratio of 2.5 to 1, which is a better ratio by quite a bit than any of the restaurants that have been approved so far in this town. And it's also a better ratio than the 3 to 1 standard, industry standard, which commonly is found throughout Massachusetts. Again, that's a subject we will be exploring in great detail with the Board of Appeals, and they're very interested in what the planning board thinks of the site plan, so the two hearings are kind of interactive in that sense. We're really here tonight to review the site plan with you, and we propose constructing or reconstructing more than 800 square feet of this commercial building. The exterior work is composed of about 840 square feet of replacement doors, new doors, and new windows. We intend to keep the footprint and height of the building the same, but to rebuild the interior, which is basically an empty space, if any of you watched the video the Falcones did, which shows you what the inside of this building looks like, it's an empty, dark space right now. What we, what you have before you, and what you list as your criteria for site plan approval are proposed design changes to the exterior of the building, landscaping, kitchen ventilation, parking lot design, lighting, storage of refuse, drainage, and utilities. The Falcones are very fortunate to have as their restaurant designer Mr. Steve Tadisco, sitting right next to me, who has designed restaurants throughout the United States, and some very notable ones. Feel free to tell us about them if you want to, but with the board's permission, I would like him to explain why he feels this former movie theater is ideally suited for renovation as a restaurant. And he's very interested, he thinks this is a very good space for this use. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Tadisco, if that's okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Take this. Excuse me. I'd like to thank everybody for inviting me to this hearing, and the opportunity to present this project. When we look at these potential projects for restaurants, we look at, there's four items, basically, we look at. And it's, we look at opportunity, challenges, solutions, and then the benefits. In this project, these points came into play when I was asked to look at this project by Vance Welch at Abbey Park Group. And we started by looking at other projects, for instance, I look at new construction projects, existing restaurants for rebranding or updating spaces in malls, airports, casinos, freestanding structures. We look at everything from... structures. We look at everything from old gas stations to railroad stations, automobile showrooms, furniture showrooms, to high-rise penthouses. When Vance asked me to look at this building several months ago, many months ago, my immediate reaction when I walked in was, this is an incredible space. It was just, it was something we never come across in the restaurant business, but very rarely. When you walk into a space like this, 6,000 square feet of open space, no columns, 23-foot-high ceilings, and I just thought it would be a wonderful space for people to gather and enjoy a dining experience in this, sort of like in this concept, I could see as being a, sort of a theater restaurant, theater concept, you know, just feel like you're really in the theater, where 600 patrons used to go on a daily basis, you know, when it was a movie theater in the '30s. And I just felt like it was a great opportunity. I mean, any designer would look at this, I know anybody that looked at this would, could come up with many, many different schemes that could just be incredible. It's a very, very exciting space. And I would like to refer to the model to talk about some of the opportunities here as we could see, as we saw them. As we all know, this, as we all know, this portion of the building was built at the turn of the century, and this, the theater was built, from what I understand, was in the '30s. And again, it accommodated up to 600 patrons, and now we're looking at a big empty box that has been empty for 30 years, 40 years. So the challenge is, this project presented to our team was, now we have a big box with no windows. We have an existing ramped entrance that has very minimal exposure on Adams Street, and we also have to deal with issues such as parking, deliveries, trash removal, et cetera. We also looked at the possibilities of doing some outdoor space. What restaurant with this magnitude of this size, if there's opportunity to do outdoor space, we'd always like to try to capture that. And also, there are other challenges, I'm sure, here, we're talking about this tonight. So we began with looking at this facade, now with the, as you can see on the model, that with these, with the proposed parking lot here, I'm proposing these three windows, these three transom windows, that will, you know, it would allow light to come in, some natural light into the space, but it would also, it wouldn't be so large that it would let a lot of light, ambient light out into the neighborhood. And also, there's a reason why these windows are at, I believe they're 10 foot 6 off-grade, is because all the light source on the interior of the restaurant would be below that 10 foot 6 sill height. So therefore, there would be no direct light coming, emitting from the, emitted from the transom windows. Then on the other, the other side of the building, where we have the outdoor cafe, we're proposing, there's three bays there. Between the pilasters, we wanted to remove the brick and replace it with three sets of folding doors, and again, with the transoms above. And these folding doors would act, they basically are bifold doors, so it would open the space up to the cafe and bring some of the indoor dining experience to the outdoors. And we have, we've accommodated about 20, we have about 20 seats out there. So now, we look at the, I know there's been some concern about these windows, and basically, I haven't, I really haven't spent a lot of time in terms of working out the lighting requirements on the inside of the restaurant, because right now, these drawings, as you're looking at them, this model that I built in my spare time, I thought it would give us an opportunity, we need the opportunity to really get into the lighting requirements of the restaurant. So basically, at this point in time, this is all schematic. This is a schematic plan, just to look at the potential of that facade on this, on this side of the building. And also, as the model shows, we're landscaping this building in such a way to sort of soften the appearance of this elevation, and also, we've got a landscaped edge facing the, these houses on Church Street with a, with brick piers and an iron fence. And also, there's a fence here that will be replaced to cut down on the visual activity on the side of the, on the side of the fence. So I thought that basically, going back to the restaurant, the concept would be developed around the theme of the space itself. So basically, the space, I have a sketch here. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I didn't know I'd be holding on to this tonight. So this sketch shows, this is the side where the, where the bays are, open to the cafe, and as you can see, it's just one big open space. And what we've done is, we're proposing a, sort of recreate the marquee entrance of the old movie theater, sort of to experience that into the, into the new restaurant. And we also provided a side entrance, an entrance rather, on the parking lot side for convenience. So basically, the whole space is open, where the stage is now, that's where our kitchen will be. So that is the concept. The stage is the kitchen is the stage, the stage is the kitchen. So that's the main focal point of the restaurant. Of course, we have a bar on the side that would relate to the open space outdoors, and then the rest is flexible seating with the required bathrooms and storage and all of that, and the deliveries would be on the side, which would be over here at this corner. So now, we're looking at the benefits of this project. Basically, it just comes down as far as a restaurant that is spacious. This is all from a design standpoint now. It's spacious. We look at it to be a comfortable, it'll be a comfortable space, and it's also, it occupies a historical structure in East Milton Square, which is, I think, is a wonderful opportunity. A new life will be given to a building that has been empty and neglected for decades. And other benefits, as we all remember the famous, you know, the presidential election, last presidential election, jobs, jobs, jobs. That evidently is going to create some, a lot of job activity at that location. And of course, tax revenue for Milton, that's good for everyone. And finally, the overall aesthetic improvement to the square. The project will be an asset, I believe, to future development and growth, economic growth. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Can we pass this around?
Yeah, pass it around.
You said the kitchen was going to occupy the stage. Is it literally going to be an open kitchen that you can see from dining area?
It will be. The kitchen will have the ability to open and close. It depends on what type of an event is going on. If there's a wedding, we may want to close it. If it's, we're talking about doing cooking classes for kids, making pizzas on Saturday morning, we may want to open it and, you know, bring all the kids up there, and it just strictly depends on what type of an event is going on at any given moment. But the whole idea is that, that elevation, when you walk in, you'll know you're in a movie theater. I mean, that's, that's the concept. You're going to, you're going to feel like you're in the old Milton Theater. And that, believe, like I said, that is the concept. That's the concept behind the project, is to, you know, retain that character of the space.
Well, I have a couple of questions, and I have, one of the people who expressed concern about your window treatment there. It seems to me that if you had long, large windows framed into those three, you know, those three spaces, you would have a better visual appearance from the outside, and if there's a light problem, light shining out, you can always treat the glass so that the light doesn't shine out.
Absolutely.
But it does seem to me that you would, you would, right now, looking at that wall from Church Street is not going to be a very exciting visual experience, and it really needs some work. That's the, my aesthetic question. The other question is, this is the Falcone Parking Lot.
Right here.
Here. And it's, this is Java Joe's here, right?
That is Abbey Park.
Abbey Park, right. Abbey Park. And you can see that this parking lot is really fairly convenient to Abbey Park, but it isn't particularly convenient to the proposed restaurant. And how, I mean, you're going to have to attract people to somehow park here rather than in the residential neighborhood and walk down. How are you going to incent the people to, is there going to be an entrance over here in this corner?
Well, there'll be an entrance here.
Right.
On Adams Street, and there's also an entrance on this new parking lot.
But this is the parking lot. They have to go down Franklin Street and then down Adams Street, and they might find it more convenient to just park in the residential neighborhood. There needs to be some incentive to get people into this lot to begin with.
Okay.
And then what, you know, once they're in there, they'll obviously, they're going to want to get to the restaurant in a way that is not inconvenient for them.
Well, they have, there's this parking here off of Church Street. It's a new parking lot with 25 spaces. I would prefer to have Greg Morris address the parking issues.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, I, Greg could walk you through the requirements.
But I do think that this lot has to be tied better to serving this, so that people know and really want to go in here rather than park on the street or park in the, in back somewhere.
Okay. Could I, could I address your concerns with the windows?
Well, you can try.
Well, I'm going to try. I'm going to try real hard. Basically, this elevation sort of grew out of the plan. In other words, we were, I was just looking at the plan and schematic. We were looking at the space, and, you know, sort of just focused on that, on the cafe and said, look, it'd really be nice to get some ambient, some natural light on this side of the building without doing a lot of, you know, making a huge opening there. I agree, you know, from a design standpoint, if this is a schematic to bring it into design development and to get into more detail, we would want to look at different alternatives here to make the windows maybe deeper or do a different, maybe, you know, do a window there, a window there, break it up. I mean, we could, we could do a study with the windows to see which is the most comfortable. I'm not too concerned with a lot of light coming out of the building, because again, you know, the windows, the way they're constructed, the, we were looking at the transom windows at the facade today, the front, and they basically, they work as a mirror, you know, the way they're insulated in the UV glass. So I don't think that we're going to have a problem like that. But this was more or less a direct response on the concerns the neighborhood had with all this light pouring out of the building. And that was just sort of a, from a design standpoint, knee-jerk reaction to the, you know, to the situation. But again, you know, it can be easily, you know, it could grow this way.
Right. I'm hearing you say that these windows could be worked on.
Of course.
And you could make them so that light didn't shine out.
Right. And we, and we could, I could make them so you like them.
I was supposed to say, I'm prepared with the chairman on the windows.
Okay.
Not pleasant enough. We're going to do it like that.
No, and again, you know.
Maybe more vertical.
Yeah, we can give a more vertical scale, and, you know, and I agree, you know, this, and again, but it's, you know, again, we're working within the pilasters, existing pilasters there. I'm trying to respect the, you know, the mass of the building and the, you know, the architectural detail, which is very little here, but we want to, we're looking at the pilasters and say, well, let's try to work within that framework and make it, make it sort of balanced. And also, I've got to deal with the interior, too. And so this interior, these bays line up with those bays, so that gives us an opportunity to make some expressions in the ceiling to sort of tie the whole thing together. And that's where that's coming from.
I'd also just encourage the board to be open to potentially other treatments, maybe below the windows. This is a, I kind of enjoy the concept of bringing back the history of it being a theater with the restaurant and concepting the theater with the restaurant. You know, perhaps it's an artistic expression under the transom windows, perhaps it's some sort of living wall with the vegetation, perhaps there's an opportunity with signage, with, you know, former, you know, old-style movie posters with menus or something along those lines. I would encourage the applicant to get creative, and I would hope that the board would be open to looking at such things, because I do like the concept of sort of this old movie theater design, and obviously, that's going to be a bit more challenging to accomplish if it's all windows.
I think the real key is the experience of the pedestrian as they're walking past us at different times during the day and the night. If they're seeing a blank wall, it's not going to feel friendly. It may not feel safe, depending on what else is going on. It's just, it's not that it isn't safe. It's the perception of safety as you walk by. During the daytime, you want to have some sort of visual interest there. The windows that are there in your concept don't really express that. You've got some landscaping, but, you know, landscaping's seasonal. It doesn't always soften during the winter, so.
That's what we're showing here.
Yeah, so I agree. I like the idea of keeping it within the existing structure and respecting that somehow, but you do need to do something to create that visual interest on the exterior.
We will be working on that.
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, what do you think of this? This is the, this side of a movie theater. I mean, it was never meant to even be seen, was it?
Well, I mean, we look back in the old photographs, it was seen. It was always seen.
It was seen, but it wasn't, it wasn't built to be seen.
No, it wasn't built to be seen. It was just a box.
It's a.
That's all it was.
It's a brick.
Box. Brick box.
Box. And the brick box needs to be, needs to be worked on somewhat.
Yes. But we, you know, the front elevation is basically speaks for itself. I mean, this works out very well. That's the brick, that's the brick beyond. The rear elevation is just brick, and we have no penetrations in that other than just filling in some old ventilation grills and all that. But the basic rear elevation, as you can see on this, really doesn't require.
It's mostly hidden by the.
Because that's where our kitchen facility is. That's where the deliveries will come on the side. Our hood will be in the back, so it wouldn't make any sense to penetrate that elevation.
But basically, on two, on two sides of your building, you know, obviously the front with the marquee, you've got visual interest there. Where your outdoor area is, you've got some visual interest there. As you say, the back doesn't matter quite as much. It's where your kitchen is. It's.
Yes.
Going to be relatively well-screened, but this is your entrance to the parking lot. The people who are knowing, who are coming to your restaurant and they've looked it up on Google Maps, they're probably going to try and come in from that entrance first. You want to make that something that is.
Yes.
Going to attract them to actually walk in through that door.
I agree. I agree 100%. And believe me, we could, we could do an incredible bang-up job here with glass and all kinds of applications and sconces and uplighting. But again, you know, my initial response was, I mean, we've been listening to these concerns of the neighborhood.
Yep.
And said, oh my God, you know, there's a restaurant in our backyard. And so this was basically, you know, it was a sort of a very mild approach to say, okay, well, we'd like to have some windows there for natural light, but we don't want to, you know, impose too much on the neighborhood.
I would avoid neon and too much uplighting for starters.
Yeah, okay. But I'm just saying, you know, you could go the, you know, the other way, but, but, you know, I hear what you're saying.
Could you show me on that scale where the outdoor seating is?
The outdoor seating is right here between these two buildings, the alley. This is Starbucks, and this is the ATM machine, and this is the space in between.
Can they get you off the sidewalk there?
Excuse me?
Can they enter off the sidewalk?
This model does not show that, but that's open for discussion.
So what I'm saying is, it would be better to have the outdoor seating out more towards Adams Street than out towards the rear of the building for the sake of the neighbors.
Well, the, first of all, the, we really don't have enough space between the two buildings for, yeah. So this is where it starts to grow. You can see these buildings start to spread apart, and that made the most obvious solution for the space.
Well, I think we might do, have like a probationary year for the outdoor seating. And if the neighbors don't like it, they can make themselves known and do something else for that space, but not for outdoors. In the summertime, everybody's windows are open and so forth, and.
I don't, I really, you know, we talked about that a lot, and I don't think that that's going to be a problem as much as, I know there is some concern for it, but what you have here is you have a pretty tight space, and you, when these, when these doors are open, basically, this restaurant will be facing this brick building, and with the noise that would come out of the space is minimal, because what happens in a restaurant is the, all the noise comes from the floor, and it goes up to the ceiling, and that bounces back down. So most of the noise is sort of concentrated in here, and anytime you open a window in a restaurant, you really don't hear as much noise that's inside. The decibels are reduced quite substantially on the outside than they are on the inside, plus the fact you're so. Plus the fact that you're so close to this building right here, that noise would probably, more than likely, just bounce back in. And also, we have, we have a fence here, we have fencing here with additional landscaping. And I'd be, I would be very surprised if this became a huge noise problem. You also have the, the noise, the white noise from the streets. You have the expressway over there. You have the traffic. And all of that noise together would create a certain decibel level that this would basically, I would, I would say would go away.
I will still advocate for what you're, basically, for the outdoor seating.
What's that? Who's gonna lab you? Oh. Can I get rid of this?
Yes.
Thank you. It's all yours.
And then just put that makeup.
Okay, thank you. Wow.
Can I ask you, sir? If you know where Java Joes are gonna, where Java Joes, I'm sorry.
Abbey Park.
Abbey Park. Where Abbey Park, where they, where will they be parking once that is not leased to them anymore?
I would, again, I would.
I think we do need to address that, but maybe rather than asking the designer to address it, I'd ask the engineer and I can address it myself. And we will be discussing it in depth, I would imagine, also with the Board of Appeals. But I, because I know the chairman also asked about incenting people wanting them, we want them to park in the Falcone Lot, which has a lot of capacity. But, you know, how do you get them to park there and, for this restaurant? And we will talk about that some more. But, you know, what, you know, we have talked about whether using valet parking would facilitate that. Where the applicants are very open to that and have, have had it in their plan from the beginning, but there are also concerns about valet parking, including the fact that you probably need a valet parking space right in front of the entrance to the restaurant. So that, everyone, the town, residents, everybody has a look at that and say, "Do we want to try it?" Again, you could try it on a trial basis. The other thing that we've talked about but has not been finalized is, as you can see from looking at this plan, it's not very far from the Falcone Lot to this restaurant, but it's across the parking lot that belongs to the other Falcone family. And there's a little hillside as you go up into the back and if you wanted to walk around, and there is landscaping around the back of the building, into the restaurant from the back. Theoretically, it may, it may be possible to create a pathway there, which would be a very good way to encourage people to park in one and go right into the restaurant. But it requires the cooperation of another landowner. And it's under discussion and there's also the specifics of how you can create such a pathway because there's a hillside. If you park now and next time you're at Starbucks, if you go there, look at the edge of the parking lot. You see this kind of an embankment there. And so something has to be done in order to open that to access. And we're not, so we're looking at it. That's the best I can say. That's one way. The other way is to, is to manage your, you know, your restaurant patrons through your website, through your, through your parking lot management. In other words, the person you have on duty in your parking lot, making sure that people are going to the other lot. And to be working in cooperation with other restaurants in the area who will be using nearby parking lots. These are all things that we started to talk about before the Board of Appeals and we have not finished talking about. And it is an issue, how, everyone says, "Well, how do you manage this exactly?" In other words, you have all this parking, but how do you know people are gonna park in it? There are a number of different methods. And if you have any thoughts on that as a restaurant designer, we'd be happy to hear them. I didn't really want to make that your task. I thought maybe the engineer could address it with me.
Yeah.
I will say, I, I just want to make a comment on the parking because, about the enforcement mechanism of the parking. I mean, I think East Milton Square certainly has its parking challenges and they're often quoted and often cited and in the paper a lot. And the town is making efforts to increase the parking and we have property owners making efforts with leases to increase parking at night and other options. But it does seem that at some point, the town may have to look at some options to, to enforce the parking on its own in the residential areas because we can supply as much parking as we like, but if, if there's more convenient parking nearby, people are gonna choose to use it. I think Alex points that out and I think it's probably accurate. So, you know, I think we have to be, we have to acknowledge, I think, of some responsibility on our own, on behalf, to look at these residential areas and hear the residents that are living there saying, "We want to figure this out. Let's, let's figure it out." Because we can't keep putting these applications, putting the burden of all this on these, on each of these applicants. We, I'd like to see most of these buildings work. And if we make each of them provide parking for their own uses in their own backyards, it's never gonna happen.
I think, going along with, I think that we have to go to the Traffic Commission. I didn't hear that mentioned tonight. But I think we have to take this matter to the Traffic Commission for the study of management, which I think is a nightmare that I don't see this working neat, well at all. And also the delivery vehicles. And we have a complication with Church Street being a one-way street, very narrow one-way street. We have Franklin Street already clogged in the morning with delivery trucks and on both sides at times, cars can barely get through. And you're gonna add, again, all that many, that many vehicles, again, with the same size as Abbey Park, so you're gonna double the, the trucks down there in the morning. And on and on and on it goes. So I, I think, before we approve this, we have to go to the Milton Traffic Commission. And I think we need a plan showing the whole area with every traffic, every parking space marked as existing and proposed on the, on the plan. Public parking, private parking, shown very, very clearly the ownership of the lots that are private, existing restrictions, existing licenses to different, different parties and so forth and so on, so that there's no doubt about who, who can use the parking space and where the, where the deliveries will be made and so on and so forth. And also utmost protection all the way around Church Street, Franklin Street, Bassett Street, about any, any spillover parking from any of these entities, we have to have that restricted, maybe put 30-minute parking on there and that will, that'll clean up that problem. But absolute, absolute protection for the neighbors all the way around. And I'm a neighbor, a block away, I'm, I'm a neighbor. I, I walk down there every day of, every day of the year, three or four times. Nobody knows the place better than me. I've been, I've been around there longer than anybody in this, in this room. This, this can work, but absolute protection for every neighbor down there is utmost in the, in the plans, all the way up to Granite Place. Because since, there's, there's been more activity in the square this year, cars now park all the way on the Adams Street up to Granite Place. And there's no parking restrictions until they stay there all day long. Nice, safe, nice, safe place. No, no commotion about parking restrictions or time limits or any, anything. This has to go before the Milton Park Commission, the Milton Traffic Commission, I'm sorry. And the, if somebody could show me how trucks, trucks coming from the south, how they're gonna get to your, your building to unload. I'd be happy to see, have somebody show me how that's gonna happen.
I was going to say, it might be time to hear from the engineer now.
Yes.
And let the designers sit down because I think there are sufficient questions about parking and traffic.
Right. We, the.
To do so.
One thing on your elevations, if you could get, in other words, the front, I'd be interested in some of the detailing there.
Is, is this over here?
A little more specific elevations on the front and side are going to be helpful, you know, with measurements and.
This, this elevation?
Yes.
It's, it's, basically, the elevation's complete. It's been constructed.
Well, I understand that, but it's still part of the site plan approval.
Okay.
The side, the building itself is two stories high? It's on the plan?
What?
This is.
The building is two stories high, not talking about the facade there.
This is, this is the one-story facade.
But the rest of the building is two stories high and that's on the plan already.
It's this section here. This is not.
The, the, all I'm saying is, let, let me see if I can say this. We need.
Architectural.
Detailed elevations for the four sides of the building. And the front, admittedly, you're doing some work. And we said when you did it, since you're, you're doing it on your own time, we're not going to discuss site plan approval for it. But now that, you know, you've got it, let's have.
We have, we have full details.
I understand you've got them there.
That's time because we got a permit.
And then when you, when you work out.
It's not here, so.
The sides. Because these things are gonna get recorded. Because this is going to be, you've got it.
I understand.
Okay.
Do you want it shown in the architectural plans or do you want it shown on the site plans?
Well, the elevations are, are, are basically, they, they show the architecture on the outside with some specificity, with enforceable specificity.
On the.
They, on the architectural plans. They call them elevations. It's the side.
Okay. So you understand what, okay.
Outside.
All right.
With dimensions, right, Alex?
Yes. Just to clarify though, we don't have a tenant for the site, correct?
You do not yet have a lease with someone?
No lease.
I would just want to make sure that there was sufficient, you know, enforceability, but also make sure that we, we don't have to have you come back here to get a tenant approval for some sort of signage. They're gonna have to get their signage approved anyway.
We, we can provide the detail. I just want to make sure I understand what it is you require. And I just, if I could just for one second say, on the, the parking, in the, we did have some discussion about this before the Board of Appeals and we'll be continuing it. I did say, made a little speech at that meeting, basically saying, "The applicant fully supports any efforts by the town and the neighborhood to regulate parking, all res, all parking, on-street parking in that area because that is, that is the other side of what's needed to make all of this work." However, it's important to keep in mind here that this applicant owns two, will own two parking lots, owns one now, will build another. And will have a total of 63 parking spaces in those parking lots for this restaurant. That is not something that any other restaurant has. It, you know, I'm, it, it doesn't necessarily have to have it because there's also public parking. But this restaurant has off-street parking. So the question is, how do you get people into your own parking spaces for your restaurant? And going along with that, though, when this issue comes up, when a new application comes up like this, it is the parking, the, you should be going to the Traffic Commission. The town should be talking to the Traffic Commission, should be taking the results of the East Milton Parking Study, which does show where all the parking spaces are and who owns them. And we, you know, we, you have that information already. It's public record. We're just saying to you, these two spaces, which we will control, will be available to the restaurant. And that's what we can guarantee, that they'll be available. You want to know how we're gonna make sure people get, go into them and don't go somewhere else.
Well, you're going to.
And that's a, that's a combination of the town's enforcement and our procedures and the restaurant's procedures.
And one thing about this lot here is that it should be designed to, to move people to the restaurant. The design of the parking lot, in other words, we're gonna want to see a plan of this parking area, you know, with sidewalks, whatever. It's not just a big.
Wayfinding signage is what you want. Something that says where to go.
Well, no, I, I mean, the design of the lot itself can, can funnel people in a direction. I mean, I don't think that it currently funnels people up Franklin Street. I, I mean, it can be designed and there are ways of doing it. And your, your engineer undoubtedly can confirm that.
You're talking about the Franklin Street lot now?
What?
You're talking about Franklin Street?
Yeah. I'm simply saying that you've got a parking lot here, you've got a lot on the other side, you know, you do this, that, and the other thing to make it a lot that people are gonna want to use to use the restaurant. And you do the same thing with this lot. And, and you can't do, not the same thing, but you, you, you look and see what can you do that make it a, a, "Let's park there. It's a nice walk."
And that's not to say, by the way, I have to add, that restaurant patrons don't have the right, in theory, to use public parking. The point is that when you add a new restaurant, you try to explain that you're adding enough additional parking capacity to take care of it, which hasn't necessarily always been the case for some of the other new restaurants, and that's fine. But you get to a point where you really have to start talking about it or you're gonna have a problem. And we're talking about it. We're doing it.
But, but, you know, when we did the zoning and said, "You're supposed to have X amount of parking," it's always, you know, when the zoning was written, it was assumed that it'd all be contiguous to the lot. And then we got into, you know, it's going to be all over the place. So, you know, when we say, "We want to know what the design of the parking lot is," if it's a non-contiguous lot, we still want to know what the design is. And the design should be, it should be an attractive space that's going to attract people to use it.
Right. Well, I mean, it's a, I agree, but I could take pictures of the Falcone Parking Lot right now and tell you that it, it's a nicely-designed parking lot with an entrance and an exit, but there should be signs. It would be great if there could be a walkway going directly across the street into the back so you could go down into the restaurant. But if not, you'd need to direct people around in some fashion. That's new because the lot isn't currently being used for this restaurant. And there, and more ideas would be very welcome as to ways to encourage that.
Since the designer's still standing here, is, is there a way to thematically draw people across, whether it's light fixtures that are shared between the side of the restaurant and the parking lot, whether it's a treatment of a sidewalk to match the front sidewalk? Are there things that can be done that would be?
Course, course there is.
So can you give us some examples?
Would you come out of this, when you come out here, it'd be very feasible to put a, a walkway right from this point behind this, this building here, behind the theater and come across the front? Or we could enter through the, the further store here at the cafe.
Caveat on the walkway, though. It has to be, it has to appear safe and attractive. So you're, if you're putting a walkway behind the buildings.
Well, we, we do need lighting.
Yes, exactly.
And all that business that goes along with it, of course. And again, that would be, actually, that would be even better. The, the, the activity at the outdoor cafe would even enhance that.
Yes.
But a bright walkway might not appeal to the neighbors.
It doesn't have to be bright, doesn't, or well-lit doesn't necessarily mean bright.
There were no, I mean, this, this is really not in the, right here is not in view of the, of the, you know, in anybody's direct view. So this would be pretty simple to, to, to work out. And also, there's still, there's also possibilities of bringing something in from the street beside the cafe at Starbucks.
Because it's not, I mean, obviously, restaurant goers have the ability to park in any of the public lots. What we want to do is to not make it so convenient to park in the residential areas across somebody's driveway. We want them to know, yes, there's parking on the main street that is public parking. There are parking in these two lots. These two lots are easy to identify as being available. So we don't want them parking down here where, you know, they may be blocking somebody's.
I, I wouldn't either. If I lived there.
Exactly.
May I ask, may I ask the applicant, the hours of operation of the restaurant?
Do you have a general idea of what the hours of operation would be? They're talking about some lunchtime and dinner service, not breakfast.
Be similar to Abbey Park's hours.
Yeah.
So would lunch is served at that?
Yep.
Well, in that case, when lunch is served and the two parking lots are full for the new restaurant. Where do the people park for the Falcone Office Building?
They, they, they will not be the full capacity of Falcone Office Building Lot. This is all what we're discussing with the Board of Appeals. I don't mind getting into it, but we need to be sure we cover everything. The Falcone Lot will not be fully available at lunchtime. Only a limited number of spaces will be available at lunchtime. only a limited number of spaces will be available at lunchtime. The Board of Appeals is going to look at the capacity of the restaurant and the number of spaces available at lunchtime, and they are going to tell the restaurant what their capacity at lunchtime can be. In other words, they're going to say, "You might have 160 seats, but we're not going to let you use 160 seats at lunchtime because you have X number of spaces," or they may say, "You have enough spaces." That's a decision they have to make based on this, you know...
Who monitors that?
Most of your lunch crowd walks anyhow from the businesses around.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question.
Who monitors that regulation about parking?
Well, the building commissioner and anybody else who's in there and doesn't think, you know, it's being observed, they can complain, certainly. It can be monitored in any number of ways. It could be monitored by me or you, you know, really. I mean, it's pretty easy to look in and see if they're overcapacity. But the real issue is, if there becomes a problem, because there's pressure on other spaces because of this restaurant, there will definitely be complaints and it would be enforced. That's how it's enforced, though, is by the building commissioner.
Can you tell me what Java Joe's, Abbey Park will park now?
Abbey Park can address that. Vance Welch is here. We're gonna be talking about that before the Board of Appeals. I can tell you that they do have other parking, they have secured other parking. We're not putting them, we're not removing them from business operation or anything like it, we've been working together with them. And it's up to the board as to whether they want to bring in another restaurant owner to testify. We do need to cover a lot in this hearing, but I can tell you, it's going to be covered. I know the Board of Appeals is going to hear about that as well, so whatever your desire is, we will do, or you can do, I guess.
Did you agree to have a plan drawn up showing all the buildings, all the parking spaces, all the entryways and so on and so forth? Did you agree to that?
All the buildings in the square or our building?
The buildings, for example, across the street, where there might be some parking.
Well, we have a plan already, because the East Milton Parking Access Study already has shown where all the lots are and who owns them.
What's the scale of that?
It's done, it's online.
Is that the scale? Is that the body scale? Does it show all the ownership and all the different times?
Shows all the ownership, it shows all the parking spaces.
And the times and so forth?
The times change, those signs change per the Traffic Commission. Abbey Park, this board actually has, Abbey Park is having a capacity of 60 during lunch because of parking issues.
So they're only allowed to have 60 seats?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember it was reduced.
Has the applicant provided the traffic study? I'd like to say one more thing to you, sir, before you leave. These bottom sketch there, yeah, I think we need dramatic change, not just the windows, but as Brian was saying, maybe something colorful, maybe, a little bit different. But, so the neighbors across the street on Church Street, they have something other than a brick wall. First of all, we want the trees out front and the plantings out front to shield the cars from their view. And then the building itself, it's a little bit elevated on the other side of Church, the building itself has something that's gonna be very pleasant, and Brian had some ideas, but before you do that, before it goes into effect, we'd like to approve it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's hear from the engineer.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Gregory Morse, I'm a registered engineer. Morse Engineering, we prepared the site plans for this project. I'll start with the existing conditions plan, we're gonna kind of take it back a step. Let's start with square one and probably gonna reiterate some of the work that's already been done tonight, but I want to make sure it's all clear. Starting on sheet two of my plan set, the property here consists of three buildings, it consists of the primary building, this is the one that's being converted into the restaurant, which houses number 556 through 558 Adams Street. Adams Street is along the bottom of the plan here. We have Church Street vertically on the plan. The Falcones, in pursuit of constructing a parking lot to support their business, purchased the two abutting properties to facilitate that parking lot. They purchased number 14 and they purchased number 10, Church Street, a two-family dwelling and a single-family dwelling. Property line here that they own is shown in bold, consists of 20,710 square feet. It is all entirely upland area, there are no flood plains, no wetlands issues. It's located entirely in the business zoning district, the business zoning district is shown here through a dashed line and travels south to Adams Street. The primary building, one that's to remain, the actual building itself is 10,680 square feet. You'll see that outside of the building areas, there has been a bituminous concrete driveway constructed, there is a gravel driveway that's been constructed, there are very minimal landscaped areas around the site. The site is totally, it's totally serviced by municipal utilities, it has service, municipal water, sewer, and electric out to the roadways. I'm gonna flip to page four, which is our site layout plan. The site layout plan depicts the raising of those two buildings on Church Street, two houses. The construction of a new parking lot, the parking lot is suited for 25 new spaces. It specifies new egress points to the restaurant facility, there's an access off of Adams Street, there's an access at the rear corner of the building here, this would be a main entrance point. We have an access at the back corner of the building, this is a loading zone, kitchen access. There's also an access at the back corner, that is to the outdoor patio and dining area. Pedestrian access and walking access around the site. There's currently a sidewalk along Adams Street, there's currently a sidewalk along Church Street, we are maintaining those sidewalks. We're utilizing the two existing curb cuts, we're shifting them slightly, but there exists two curb cuts right now off of Church Street. As we stated earlier, the Falcones have began some of the facade work on the existing businesses, the boutique, the barber shop, the salon out on Adams Street. They've also brought the entrances of those businesses into ADA compliance. Off of the back parking lot, we have new walkways, a new walkway from the parking lot up to the new main entrance in the back. We also have a concrete walkway around the back of the building to that outdoor patio area. Outdoor patio area is surrounded by a proposed gate and fence enclosure. That is not meant to be an access point into the restaurant, but more for people in the restaurant to go out on the patio. Our primary access and egress is gonna be either off of Adams Street or the back parking lot locations. The parking lot itself, Church Street is a one-way street, traveling down or in a southerly direction. Adams Street, as you know, is two-way access. So what we've done is, we've provided a one-way parking layout, where a car would enter, we have signage out here that this is an entrance-only location, cars can pull in and park in any of these spaces. We have conventional parking spaces, we did not take credit for any compact spaces, these are all standard sizes. We provide an ADA-compliant van space at the closest possible location to the entrance. As far as loading, as far as dumpster refuse, what we've done is, we've located a dumpster at this location, we had located it previously along this property line, but we have relocated it, we heard from an abutment to the north, and we were able to pull the dumpster back further onto this property. It is entirely within an enclosure, it's not open to the parking lot, it's in a gated enclosure, and it's the closest point to our kitchen, so it makes for easy access in and out of the kitchen. As far as deliveries, what we anticipate is, all the deliveries would actually be able to occur in the parking lot. They're not gonna be parking out on Adams Street or out in the streets like they do at some of the other restaurants in the square. What they'll be able to do is, a truck will be able to access the site. These parking spaces here are hatched, this becomes our loading zone, and what we do is, we would schedule the deliveries to occur in the morning hours. As you've heard, we anticipate business being open for a lunch schedule, a dinner schedule, not breakfast schedule. So we would schedule deliveries for morning. As traffic comes around, we have a stop sign and stop line, we have a right-turn-only sign directing people out to Adams Street as they exit. Along the northern portion of our parking lot, what we've proposed is, we've proposed double-stacked parking, one car in front of another car, and we've proposed that through the use of valet parking. That also has to go along with the use of the Milton Parking Lot, or, sorry, the Franklin Street Parking Lot. What we would have is, we would have a sign out here at the entrance of our site saying that additional parking is available, or parking is available on Church Street. As you come into Church Street, we have a valet station where you could drop your car, a valet attendant would run your car over to Franklin Street. Your patrons are then dropped right here at the entrance, there's no need for them to traverse from Franklin Street to the site. In the event they do, that Franklin Street lot, we're talking like it's a far distance, it really isn't. I don't have the exact measurement, it's less than a block away. I can provide the calculations on the distance, there is existing sidewalk along public rights-of-way, we can certainly look into construction of a pathway, construction of the pathway that was talked about earlier would be across a private property of another landowner, I don't know that that'll be feasible, we'll certainly look into it. Flipping to page four of the plan, we've proposed upgrades to the utility services and to the drainage on the property. The site will be serviced by new municipal sewer service out to Church Street, as well as two new water services, a potable water service, as well as a fire water service. The building itself is undergoing, as you know, a complete gut, it is going significant structural renovation and seismic renovations with the building as well. The parking lot area here, when we run the calculations, I did submit a full stormwater report with calculations in it as part of the application package. It documents the existing rates and volumes of runoff versus the proposed rates and volumes of runoff from the site. Basically, what we provided is, we provided a hydroCAD model that takes the existing conditions and determines how much water is leaving the site. And then we've run it with our proposed conditions. And what you'll see in the report is, there's already so much impervious surface on this site between the existing buildings, the existing parking lots, and driveways associated with those buildings, that post-development, there's only an increase here of impervious surface of 1,050 square feet. So it's a very minimal increase in impervious surface. What we've done, right now, this whole back area drains to two leaching catch basins. Leaching catch basins are old, they're outdated, they don't provide any sort of stormwater management if there was an oil spill in the parking lot or anything like that. So what we've done is, we've provided a brand-new, fully-compliant drainage system, I've highlighted here in blue. The parking lot all drains to a catch basin right here, this is a deep-sump hooded catch basin, it's equipped with a storm scepter 450 particle separator, and then stormwater is recharged into the ground through the use of Coltech recharger chambers below the surface. The resultant here documented in the report is that the rates and the volumes of the stormwater coming off the site post-development are equal to or less than what exists today. Also included in that document are construction-phase erosion control and sedimentation plans and procedures, as well as post-development procedures outlining the maintenance requirements for the catch basins, outlining the maintenance requirements for the subsurface systems to ensure that they are up-kept for drainage compliance. Flipping back to our site layout, sheet three, on this plan, what we did is, we've added landscaping on this plan, landscaping here, as you saw in the section here. We've proposed landscaping along that back facade, a landscape bed throughout here. But more significantly, what we heard from abutments when we went to the ZBA hearing was, is they did not want to see, they wanted significant screening along the side here, especially along the north. And so what we've proposed is, we've proposed eight-foot-high evergreen screening, Leland Cypress or Arbor Vitae, something that's gonna create a permanent evergreen screen. And that starts at the corner of the property, and you'll see it traverses, you know, the whole way, the whole northern edge. It also encompasses around that outdoor seating area. We would supplement back here with some ornamental grasses and other plantings as well. But the purpose here out front certainly was to buffer this northern property line and buffer this residence to the north. Along the front, we've proposed a wrought iron gate, we've proposed some shrubbery along the back of the sidewalk here. We didn't want to propose anything significant like the evergreens on the front here, because we didn't want to obstruct site distances in or out of the site with vehicles as they enter or exit. That pretty much concludes how we came out with this layout. We're upgrading all the utilities, we've upgraded the parking lot, the drainage, as I've shown and outlined in that document there. I'd entertain any questions.
Pardon me, are you proposing any new hydrants?
No, we were not proposing any new hydrants as part of this project.
What do you think?
The building itself is gonna be fully sprinkled.
The outdoor seating area, is there fire egress from there?
Fire.
Without having to go back through the building?
There's a walkway right down the side.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a few questions. Thanks for a very complete presentation, by the way. Do you anticipate external grease trap here? Is that a design question?
Probably more of a design question.
Okay, that's, probably should have asked it.
There may be, if there was, it would be a subsurface grease trap?
That would be a subsurface grease trap.
And do you, so would that be in this parking lot here?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, all right. The dumpster enclosure, do you have any details on the screening material?
Yep. Yeah, this one here, let's see if I included a detail on it. I have one in my plan. The dumpster enclosure, the dumpster pad, and it doesn't...
Chain link fence.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see a slightly, I'd like them to take a look at the dumpster enclosure and look at something a bit more aesthetic.
Is it a concrete enclosure?
It's, well, it's a concrete pad that it's placed on, but as far as the enclosure, we could either do a wooden enclosure or a vinyl clad fence.
That's what you're showing on the plan.
Vinyl clad, do I have the detail there?
I couldn't find it.
Five of seven, you'll see it on...
Five of seven, I have it listed.
Ah, there it is.
Got it, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay.
All right, yeah, yeah, so it's fine.
And that's height, what was the...
The height on it's eight feet.
Eight feet, perfect.
So is that a wooden one?
Square.
Yep.
A wooden one would definitely be preferable to the chain link you're showing here.
They're showing chain, I don't see chain link.
It says chain link fence dumpster enclosure.
It's the chain link fence with the vinyl slats.
With the vinyl slats, oh, okay, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, wooden.
Definitely wooden. Sorry, Alex, I'm sorry, one more on the dumpster enclosure while we're on it. Since it's a restaurant use, from an engineering standpoint, I'd love to see a drain in that dumpster pad for purposes of cleaning it out, so the, whatever's being cleaned in the dumpster pad doesn't run down into the parking lot, it would be better to just have it go into a dry well system and recharge and clean out the dry well now and then. They can probably handle that with a hose bib from the building, but it'd be great if you can show a drain in the dumpster pad. I don't see why we couldn't. It all drains
to a catch basin, but putting something...
Prefer not to have the grease running across the parking lot.
Absolutely. It's an easy change.
The dumpster itself probably should be something state-of-the-art, because that is going to be the potential source of trouble.
Yeah. The Board of Health regulations on these require that the tops of the dumpsters be covered as well.
But I'm sure there are different kinds of dumpsters out there on the market, and there are probably some that are better than others.
I'll look into it.
We'd like the best.
A state-of-the-art dumpster.
I just want to add that the rules next year are changing so that food waste, food scraps will not be allowed to be placed into dumpsters, which should be good for all of us in terms of what's happening with dumpsters at restaurants. But it's next year, and that, you know, we'll have to see how that works.
Where do they go?
Compost.
They, they're be-composted. It's not quite, we're not quite going back to the old garbage pail in the yard like I had at my house growing up, but the idea actually is that I think it'll be collected, the compost will be collected and used, I mean, you know, food scraps.
How many times a week?
It's not, it's a future regulation, I just mention it only because there are always concerns about that, you know, food waste scraps and how, what's gonna happen with them when they're sitting there in the dumpster. So I don't know all the rules yet, but I do know that it's changing.
Question. On the public sidewalk, when you transition from the public sidewalk to crossing your curb cut to the driveway entrance and back onto the public sidewalk, what will that material be?
Back here, these transitions?
Yeah, those two transitions.
This is all concrete sidewalk.
So you're going to have a concrete entry into that, okay.
And at each of the intersections to the curb cut, you know, would it be an ADA ramp?
Okay, good.
A transition.
Are you looking at any sort of change in the materials or just...
No, the parking lot and the driveways will be standard asphalt.
Okay.
The sidewalks will be concrete.
All right.
And the edge condition on the lot, is it just bituminous berm or are you looking at a concrete?
It's a precast concrete curb, yep.
I could look at the plan.
Yep, six-inch reveal minimum.
Great, thanks.
The Franklin Street lot, it has a double-barrel entrance and then it goes around in a double-barrel exit, and it does seem to me that the presentation is basically for access to this building. And you've heard the discussion that it can be, it should be oriented more to getting people onto the street. In an aesthetically pleasing way.
And just for clarity on that discussion, it's not the distance of the lot from the building that we're concerned about. Obviously, it's not very far away. It's making sure that people understand that that lot is connected to this building so that they understand that they have the right to park there and making it convenient for them to do so.
If they, I'm just thinking, in the question originally, I was thinking at the time of valet, when Marion said Adam Street, and obviously when one was dropping out there, and at that time I was thinking, why don't you valet from the parking lot that exists, which you explained?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I was a young guy who worked in a restaurant and the valet parking lot, you wouldn't have known where it was, and there was no intention of you needing to know where it was. So in this sense, it would seem to me, if it was my restaurant, I encourage everybody to plenty the parking lot adjacent to the building and let the valet handle the overflow to the valet lot.
That's what they do at ADA Wharf.
Which makes sense, yeah.
I think that's our intent.
Well, except for your double-barrel parking, you can't double-barrel it if you're not going to have the valet. You're going to lose, you're going to lose a one, two, three, four, you'll lose a lot of spaces.
You have to have the valet.
Valets included in our proposal, yeah.
Is there any availability for the public to interject here?
We're going to.
On the abutting property.
We're all abutters.
We're going to, what we're doing is.
Just before we go, the dumpster, we met with the Falcone's last week, and we had a pleasant meeting with them. You know, they made a bunch of concessions. They said they were going to move the dumpster, but they told us it was going to be a complete concrete structure, which is going against, so before we get off topic of the dumpster.
But you can't be heard. We're going to, we're going to open, we're going to have public comment, we're going to finish the board's discussion. Then people who want to speak are going to come up, they're going to speak into the microphone, they're going to identify themselves, and they're going to have plenty of time to make known their concerns, so. But this may be, this may be a good segue.
I'm ready to segue to public comment.
All right, yes, Marion.
Just to respond, though, to that, I think the applicants are willing to put whatever you want them to put around the dumpster, and there'll be more discussion, I'm sure, when you hear from neighbors, so.
All right, now, why don't, you've got to make room for people who want to speak. Now, are they going to be using this microphone? They're going to have to use this microphone. We can't keep switching that.
What's that?
Thank you, you can sit down.
If you want to give me that microphone, I'll give it back.
Now we're opening, yes, sir, you may, you may start. We're opening the hearing up to public comment, and identify yourself and make your comment.
My name's Rick Hines. I live at One Paradise Road in Milton. I'm speaking, this is my brother John Hines.
I live at 159 Pleasant Street.
We're speaking on behalf of our parents, Dick and Kathleen Hines, of 20 Church Street, which is the abutting property to the north. You know, we spoke at the last meeting, the Board of Appeals meeting, that's going to be continued. We had a lot of concerns, we heard both sides of it. Like I said, we just met with the Falcone's, they were nice enough to reach out to us. We went to their office, we went over the plans. Aesthetically, what they're doing with the building, we think is great, the trees, you know, they're very concerned, they want to cut down the noise, all of that. They moved the dumpster, we asked them to move the dumpster. They did move it, you know, 15, 20 feet into the parking lot with the promise of building a.
Something with a stone.
Stone, brick.
Enclosed structure.
Enclosed structure, not, you know, our concern, you know, I know this law is going to come next year if it gets passed. I mean, I don't think it's definitely been passed, so we can't assume it's going to be passed. So that is a major concern for my family, is that until it's passed, that food will be dumped in these dumpsters, and we need, like you said, top-of-the-line dumpsters and an enclosed structure, not a chain link fence with, that something a rat can chew its way through to get in there. So that's a major concern, and, you know, we had thought that that was all set when we met with the Falcone's, but we just want to reiterate that that's what's needed on that dumpster. Now, at the Board of Appeals meeting, you know, there was a lot of discussion about the traffic and the flow, and, you know, I read the Milton Times article that came out this week that the parking's been solved, which I didn't know that was the case, I thought it was still a discussion. But, you know, when we met with the Falcone's last week, they mentioned that this parking lot on Church Street was going to be the main drop-off for valet, which is, I think, even worse for the residents of Church Street. I have no problem having it being used as a valet parking lot as a drop-off, but if you're having every car that comes up for that 160-seat restaurant multiple times a night, so if a car comes up, it gets dropped off, it goes out, that means you're doubling the traffic on Church Street, which was never brought up in the last meeting, so.
Traffic's pretty busy at 5:00, we get that, but this is the case.
Right now, you drive up Church Street at 8:00, there's no traffic, but obviously, if you're adding 160-seat restaurant.
And that's a main drop-off place.
And you're using that as the main drop-off place, and you're encouraging people not to go to the other lots, to go there to get your cars out on a one-way road. I don't know how people are going to back out of their driveways. And it's not like it's a giant parking lot, it's a 25-spot lot that has a small archway to go in and out. So what, if your valet station is at the top of the archway, you have two or three cars maximum that can be waiting, and then you have a line of cars on Church Street backed up. So you have those, and the people, the browns facing the lot, you're going to have double the lights coming out, double, you know, it's just, it's concerning, yeah.
One other thing you guys mentioned earlier, there's going to be an entrance in the back of the restaurant, and you talked about going around the restaurant, that's going to create a lot of foot noise and a lot of foot traffic to my parents' house.
Which again.
Right now, there's no plan to have people be able to walk around that back of the restaurant. If that's the case, that's going to create a lot of noise for my parents right there.
Again, that was another.
If that were suggested, then we would have to, we would have to weigh the pros and cons.
Okay.
And one thing that everyone here should be aware of, the Board of Appeals is meeting on?
15th?
The 15th.
13th.
13th. And the traffic, the parking, the parking is something they are going to determine, and exactly what they determine is, of course, going to be determined by the Board of Appeals, not by the planning board, and.
I mean, it was discussed in detail.
So it certainly hasn't been resolved, and this board.
In the Milton Times, it was quoted that it's been resolved.
But it hasn't been resolved, so you should bear in mind that you should attend that hearing, because what we're, what we're doing is that the design of the parking is, in fact, something we can look at. We can't determine the parking. That's something the Board of Appeals determines. And the Board of Appeals is actually dealing with a special permit for a portion because of the building being too close to the lot line. And we are dealing with site plan approval, so it's a complicated procedural situation.
And can I add another complication that maybe could be part of the solution? Is we keep referring this to the, as the Falcone's, and it's their building, it's their project, but Vance and his other investor that own Abbey Park are also going to be running this restaurant, correct? And so they're taking those spots that are used by Abbey Park, and they're moving them to Santander and whatever the other lots are, the Funeral Home. I mean, it's pretty clear, again, in the Milton article, that Vance is going to be running both restaurants. I think there needs to be a solution with Vance, the Falcone's, and the town of Milton about using all of these lots for both restaurants and making it, combining them, right? Because you say the.
People aren't going to know to walk over.
You know, this restaurant has two and a half spots per, or one spot for every two and a half person, whereas, you know, but you're taking spots from Abbey Park, and there's 160, or 120-person restaurant there as well. My suggestion is, valet is great, you can control where people are parking, but I don't think putting it on Church Street is the right answer, right? You have both restaurants of the same ownership. I think the town needs to get involved in whether it's in front of Abbey Park or whether it's in front of Starbucks, at 5:00 or at 6:00 at night, dedicate two spots for valet there. You walk to your right, you go to the new Italian restaurant, you walk to your left, and you go to Abbey Park. And then you're reducing the number of cars and patrons that are coming up Church Street that are parking on Franklin Street, and then get these cars out to whatever, Dolan Funeral Home or whatever it's called, and Santander and the Sprint Building they're talking, like, all these different lots, it's controlled in front of the restaurants, not in a residential area behind.
Can I just make a recommendation? I'm not sure how much this board has purview of that, but I think working with Mr. Duffy, who clearly has the same concern about the traffic in the area, it would be a great idea for the neighbors in East Milton Square to force the Traffic Commission to sit down and deal with all of this. And it would make everyone's job at this table and everyone's job in that neighborhood, there's business owners, homeowners, and building owners, a lot easier. So it seems like it would be a good idea to get everybody at the table, but I'm not sure this is the table to have it at.
But it is a good idea.
It's a great idea. It's a great idea.
It should happen.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think that in the morning, Bill should talk to the police chief and, as well as the zoning board, and put the horse in front of the cart and find out which one goes first and so on and so forth. There has to be some communication between the police chief, which is the Traffic Commission, and the ZBA. They have to talk to each other. Start talking to each other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I apologize for interrupting early.
No, that's okay, it was a good transition. Who else wants to be heard?
Good evening, Board. Tony McDonald, 4 Mechanic Street. I'm an abutter to this project. This is ludicrous. This is absolutely ludicrous. The box should be torn down. There are storefronts there, that's what you got. This was something built in the '30s. People walked. We didn't have the traffic and the cars and all that. It's a box. Tear it down. This is ludicrous. The impact on the residential neighborhood there is horrendous, horrendous, as it is. Every car that's going to go to this restaurant, coming down Church Street, is going to shine on my house, every single one of them. During the day, at 7:00 at night there, we have peace. Things quiet down, almost like the carpets are rolled up. That's our quiet time. Now they want to take it away from us. There's a restaurant there, Abbey Park. I stayed away from that because I looked at the plans, I looked at, they had parking, everything was all set, it was not an impact. Now you want to take that away from Abbey Park? Well, Abbey Park should go if they got no parking there, because there's, I'm not going to go pack a Dolan and walk up to Abbey Park to go and have a burger. It's not going to happen. It's ludicrous, and no matter how you slice it, it ain't going to work. It ain't going to fit. It's just not going to fit there. There's a bus stop in front of my house, parallel with Church Street, blocks the light. Traffic is going to be all backed up in the residential neighborhood there. It happens every day without the restaurant there. It's horrible. It's horrendous. That bus stop has moved three or four times already, shouldn't be there at all. Should be way up the street somewhere, not in the square. Ludicrous. It's insane. It's insane what's going on here. It's craziness. And now, oh, we're going to put more parking over in Santander, oh, right next door to me. Oh, the bank closes at 3, 4. I have peace. After that, oh, we're going to have the drunks and everybody else coming in there. Oh, it's going to be an upper-class restaurant. Well, what if that fails? Then what's going in there? Hooters? The Falcone's are interested in making money, they want to fill the spot. You know? What are we going to put in there? Oh, well, jeez, you know, it's going to be good for the, good for Milton, it's going to be good for the taxpayers. Well, I'm paying a lot of taxes, and I'll continue to pay more taxes, I'm sure. You know? I don't see it helping me at all. I see it hurting me. I've got some land there, and I, I don't want to build on it because I see what you're doing. You're going to croak me. I, what am I going to do? It's a residential piece of property, I, who's going to rent it from me? Who's going to move there? Who wants to live there with all the traffic and everything else there? I would say, tear down the box and back and rent out the storefronts. That's what it should be.
Hello, I'm Ed Duraco. I live at 9 Church Street, which is directly across from the proposed parking lot. That's the smaller parking lot. One of the things I'm concerned about that hasn't been addressed, and this has to do more with the planning site, is the lighting that's going to be in the parking lot. I have a two-family home, and I have tenants. I'm concerned about that lighting flooding into our space, because we're up high. We're up as high as probably where those lights are going to be. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe those lights have to be on when it's dark and all night, not just during the operation of hours, but all the time. And I heard that that's a regulation, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's going to affect my sleep, for one thing. And also, you're talking about deliveries. You got a one-way street. We have delivery trucks parking on the sidewalk now that you can't get up and down that street. It's a one-way street. You get a Cisco truck delivering goods. You've seen a Cisco truck, that's a 10-wheeler. Can you imagine that going through the neighborhood? Has to go all the way, down Franklin, down Bassett, up Church, and then he has to get into that little cutout with a huge truck. Oh, no, he's going to park it right there and get the two-wheeler out, because he can't get in that parking lot. You can't get a 10-wheeler back there.
I'm Nancy Duraco.
Is my wife dance?
We live directly across the street. The neighborhood right now is extremely congested. I mean, we can't get in and out of our driveways now, even with all the businesses, because right now, all the people that work in the square park on Church Street, and we've had many problems, there's a lot of children in the neighborhood, the trucks come up, they block our driveways. I mean, there's just numerous, numerous issues. We are concerned with the lighting, the security lighting, because literally, our house is directly across from the parking lot.
So you have, I'm sorry, yes.
Go ahead.
We have those lights, those lights will be coming out at night, right into our first floor. There's no other way for them to come, they have to come out.
Well, lights actually can be directed to shine down.
Well, how about the lights in the automobile? How are they going to be shining down? You have cars coming out of there all night long.
But you're still going to have lighting. We live on, we have a tent on the first floor, we live on the second and third floors, there's still going to be light shining in our house. I mean, we're not opposed to Milton development, but we feel as though this project is, like, very big. It's a huge project in a very small, already congested neighborhood.
One thing you should understand about site plan approval is that we are not granting a permit for the use. Use is a use which is, a restaurant use is something you can do in the, in the business district. We're not determining the parking requirement. We're not determining the parking requirements. What, we don't have the opportunity to say, no, this is no good, we're turning this project down. What we have the opportunity to do is to hear concerns, to make this project as pleasant a project for everyone concerned. And your comments about lights are something that, that needs, needs attention. But, but just bear in mind that at the end of the hearing, we don't have the option of saying, sorry, no project. That's not, that's not in our, in our jurisdiction. The Board of Appeals can determine parking and it's going to do a special permit because of a, because of the fact the building's too close to a line, but I think that it's unlikely that they would simply turn down the project. But that's up to them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing that we can do, however, is ask for lighting details, which I noticed weren't in our package. Actually, I meant to ask for that earlier because we have the, the lighting study showing what the illumination will be at different sites. But we don't actually have the details of the proposed lights.
And of course, the,
And we should have those.
The exiting lights, it would be good to have some information on exiting lights.
Also, I think in the, in the application, the proposed hours of the lighting may have been too, I was concerned at how long they were. I'm not sure that they actually have to stay on all night, so we need to double-check that.
Why would they have to stay on all night?
Well, they were, it was in the proposal that they'd be on.
For security reasons.
Yeah, the, but the parking lights don't necessarily have to be on. Exactly. So we need to, we need to clarify which lights are going to be on when.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have just one more thing to say. Also in regards to, this might be more of a planning board thing. Our view coming out there, when those two homes come down, we're just looking at a big brick wall. Basically. I mean, right now we've been looking at two homes. I'm not going to say they're the most beautiful homes I've ever seen. And I think, I, thumbs up for trying to develop this property. But I don't want to be looking out there over at a void. And then you're talking about a couple of little plants in front and a couple of trees. You can't block too much. So all's I'm really going to be seeing is that.
You would say that brick wall is an eyesore. You might as well say it because I think that it is.
But on the other hand, I don't want big windows with people that could see what I'm doing and I can see what they're eating either. I mean, I don't want to see that either.
Thank, thank you.
All right, well, I think big windows don't, big windows don't have to be.
Let me show you where my house is so you can see where I live. Right here, you can see it right? Okay, that's where we live right there. So you can see what we're concerned about. So all the cars coming down here is going to go in front of our house and when they come out, that's where we live. So, but I don't want to see what they're eating. So I don't, I'm not into having.
The windows can be treated so that you cannot see what they're eating.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Suzanne Brown. I live at the corner of Church and Adams. And I'm probably, along with Mr. McDermott, probably going to have the most impact with this restaurant. First of all, I've been to three meetings now and every time I go, the parking gets increased. Twenty-one spaces, twenty-three spaces, now it's 25 because they moved the dumpster. The valet parking that they talked about tonight at the Church Street parking lot was never mentioned in the meeting. Never. Now you're increasing the trip. It was mentioned as valet, but it was never mentioned in the Church Street parking lot. Now you're adding all the cars and all the traffic now onto Church Street. Between Bassett Street and the top of Church Street, there's 15 to 20 kids that live on that street. Okay? So now you're adding the traffic for 160 patrons, plus the normal capacity on Church Street. I can't get out of my driveway now. Okay, on a Friday, Friday afternoon, five, six o'clock, there's a five-car backup. So now I'm going to have a line for valet parking too. The street isn't big enough to split, you know, oh, the right side's going to be valet and the left side's going to be a pass-through. Because there is parking on the street. Marion said, you know, the restaurant can use public parking. Public parking is Church Street. That's the closest thing to it. There's no resident parking. There's been talk of resident parking. There's not enough spots. There's a shell game going on with the parking as far as Abbey Park's now going to use Santander and Citizens. Okay, I was here in front of you people for the Abbey Park meeting. I was at every Abbey Park meeting. One of your conditions, when I want you to go back and look, was that the parking is on their website, where you could park. You could park at Dolan's, you could park at Citizens', and you could park at the Falcone parking lot after a certain time. It's nowhere on their website. Okay, so now you're going to give me a new restaurant and tell me the parking's going to be on Church Street and Franklin Street. No one's going to enforce it. If you go down, go down on Friday or Saturday night, Franklin Street parking. Everybody from Abbey Park is now in that Franklin Street parking lot. So now how are you going to enforce that the people from the new restaurant get to park there? Or they have to park, who's directing this? It's a monkey show as far as the parking. Oh, it's a free-for-all. You want to park at Santander, fine. I can't see people parking at Citizens Bank. Even though it's a short walk, there's no way everyone's going to go to Granite Avenue and park at Citizens Bank. You're fooling yourself. And for you to give approval for five spots down Dolan's Funeral Home, that's, that's even funnier. Seating capacity, they say 140 and then 20 outside. They haven't given any occupancy. That's only the seating, not the occupancy, not the people standing at the bar or waiting. So we're not including them in the traffic study or car study or parking or what have you. The parking lot, as Eddie and Nancy said, the lighting's going to have a huge impact. And it is state law, it has to stay open. If it's a parking lot, it has to be on. So now we're on the second floor and now we have lights, okay? We've been to three meetings. I expected some lighting here. You know, there's not even a showing of where the lights would go. Okay? But the biggest impact in this, they're doing it for financial reasons and they picked it, you know, this would be the best thing for the par, for their town instead of doing apartments and impacting the schools. But yet, their, where their parking lot is, and I know you can't do parking, but you have to understand where I'm coming from and it's directly impacting me. They're going out, the headlights of the car, and I said this twice to them, headlights of the car go directly into my yard or my porch and now impacting two bedrooms on the first floor and a bathroom, okay? So now my parents rent. They can't rent the apartment, so what? Oh, well, we got a nice restaurant next door. I can't get the rent that I was getting because you have lights going until midnight or 12:30. So who cares about that? Oh, well, it's a nice restaurant. You know, right now the latest car, if the boutique stays open, is nine o'clock. Nine o'clock you can deal with, okay? It's one car, two cars. The people that live there, it's not a noise maker. Now I have all of the valet. So I have people coming out to get their car. There's talk, there's this, there's that. I have a Dunkin' Donuts delivery at 3:00 AM in the morning. I can tell you when it's delivered because I hear it. You can't tell me that the trees are going to help this. Okay? That's at Dunkin' Donuts. I'm right on the corner. I'll show you my house. There's a trash pickup at 5:15 in the morning. Right there on the corner, the big white house. That's it. So for you to say, okay, well, we're going to have the same hours as Abbey Park. So I'm going to have people coming out after a few drinks and talking. And they don't mean to be talking loud, but I have bedrooms on that side. I have children. Okay? I'm dealing with enough and, you know, he says mentions about the, oh, well, the expressway and this and that. We don't hear the expressway. I grew up in that house. I've been in that house 50 years. The square grew around us. I didn't move here and know that there was a restaurant going there. Or there was going to be a parking lot across the street. You know, and I honestly believe, he can have his restaurant, fine. Leave the two houses across the street and don't make the parking lot there. But no, for financial reasons, they have to do it, but it's going to impact me financially. And, so, and then the vents, poor Mrs. Heinz in the back with the, with the kitchen. She's going to hear the vents and possibly the smell. And nobody in the square can tell me you don't smell Mr. Chan's on a good day. The walkway with lights would affect her. That would be a major impact for her. You know, you know, they did a traffic study, but yet this is the first meeting that they say they're putting the valet on Church Street. You can't tell me, okay, just say it's 50 more cars or 100 more cars. 100 more cars on Church Street? It wasn't built for that. And to let you know, we're probably exploring legal counsel to represent us.
Okay. Well, I think the valet on Adams Street sounds like a good plan.
But it's still, you know, what, what happens with my rent? That I can't rent it because I have a disco light, you know, lights going straight across. They're coming out. Just once, I will say, and I know you can't do it, anything on it. They're coming out right here and they were pretty generous as far as it, here is my porch where we spend most of the summer, right here. So coming straight out, I can wave at everybody, you know, with the headlights on. Then they turn, when they turn, they hit every single thing here on the first floor. Okay, and the gentleman that got up there, his house is right here.
And I can wave to them.
Yeah, you can wave to them right after that. You know, it's, it's, to put a backup here is ridiculous. And actually, he's impacting me financially, this restaurant.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Paul Travis. I live on Hurlicruff Road in East Milton. I'm a business owner and a commercial property owner in the square. I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Milton, as you know, is changing. I've lived and worked in the town for over 40 years, have grown my family there and my business. I've seen a number of changes and we're going to see more. Not long ago, we had old schools, an old library, no Milton Market Place, CVS, no Abbey Park, Steel and Rye Plate. In fact, no restaurants at all. No fitness center, no condos, no senior living. Milton Hospital was a small-town hospital. Now it's a large medical facility, servicing the town and its residents. With Quincy closing, it's going to help more of the South Shore, our neighbors. Milton's population, as you know, in the master plan in front of you, is changing. It's getting younger. With our new schools and location of Boston, it's drawing a new generation of residents who want a place to shop, dine, get a haircut, spend time with neighbors and friends in their own town. The Falcone Company has a plan to take an old, empty building in dire need of repair, put a fresh face on it, and put it on the tax rolls. If anyone knows the Falconis, they have pride in ownership of their properties. One way you can tell this is they always put their name on the property, which is very important for a property owner. Thank you.
All right, who else wants to be heard?
Hi, I'm Dr. Cindy Christensen. I live at 59 Collmar Street and I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 7, which is, consists mostly of areas east of the highway. I'm in favor of the improvements, the restaurant, and I think the Falconis are thoughtful and honest developers whose ears are open and remain open to seen and unforeseen problems. However, I understand the frustration of my fellow Precinct 7 neighbors. It's difficult to trust that the town will adequately handle any additional problems in East Milton when services and protections of residents now is so inadequate. I'm speaking tonight to ask that members of the board in your roles as community leaders speak up on behalf of those of us who live in East Milton, not just tonight, but in the future. We need a fair share of town services. We need a fair share of the tax revenue that this new restaurant will bring. East Milton is a place for most of you to visit, but it's a place many of us live. If current, if we currently had adequate town services and protections in our neighborhood, I think some of the concerns voiced tonight would have been lessened. However, these should not be the Falconis' problems to fix. We're tired of hearing that there's nothing that can be done about cut-through traffic and traffic violators. The chief said that there were about 5,000 moving and parking violations written by Milton Police Department last year. That's about 12 or 13 per day. One could give out this many each morning in East Milton Square. But traffic enforcement isn't just a Milton Police Department problem. Some have said that people and business owners don't want the police to increase ticketing. If this is the, the reason that traffic and parking laws are not enforced, then shame on Milton. Right now, children who live east of the highway have no safe route to school. Next-year school bus fare is excessively high and there are no crossing guards for the public schoolchildren in our area. With little enforcement of traffic and parking laws and traffic lights that often do not work, we need the community to share the responsibility to get the children east of the highway to school safely. However, once again, these should not be business owners or developer problems to fix. I want to thank Marion McEttrick, Jeannie Schmidt, and Brian Furs for talking with me before this meeting and listening to my concerns. I think they got it. So just in conclusion, here's my advice. If the town wants nice places to visit in East Milton, please be sure and speak up to ensure that all of the residents, including those of us who live east of the highway, have a fair share of town services and protections now, new restaurant or not. It will make it easier on the next developer who comes before your board. Thank you.
How's that for interest?
Very nicely done.
My name is April Anderson Lamro. I live at 249 Brook Road. And I'm here to speak in support of the project before you tonight. I've also brought 13 letters of support from other residents of Milton who weren't able to get here tonight because of school vacation and other obligations. So I'll give them to Bill and hopefully he can get you copies. On Christmas Eve of all days, I got a wonderful gift from the town of Milton in the form of a new tax bill, which unsurprisingly went up again for the eighth time in the eight years that I've lived here. You know, I say that as a joke, but it's, it's not at all a joke. It's a big challenge for my family to make all these ends meet. I'm a two-parent working household with three kids. And when I knew, moved to Milton, I knew that the taxes were not cheap, but I didn't realize how much they were going to continue to grow year over year. We have, I'm also an economic development professional. I've worked in economic development for almost 20 years through the past two administrations, Romney and Patrick. And so I, I have a lot of exposure to these issues and I'm certainly sensitive to the concerns of the abutters and the residents in East Milton who are concerned about traffic and concerned about illegal parking, which incidentally doesn't seem like an unsolvable problem. And I would be glad to participate in any conversation that is available for the public to participate in on ways to solve that. I mean, I would have to think that some creative thinking for enforcement could solve at least the illegal parking problems in, in short order. I know the quickest way to solve me from parking illegally is to give me a ticket and the word travels fast. So hopefully there'll be a separate conversation about that issue and I'd be glad to donate my time to try to figure that out. But for this conversation, I'm concerned about the stability of our community, economic stability of our community. We have very few business districts in our town, which is exactly the way the town of Milton wants it to be. And I feel the same way. And we have even fewer available properties in our existing business districts that offer any opportunity really for growth. This is one location that I think offers quite, offers quite a bit of opportunity for exciting new commercial development. And I'm even more excited by the fact that it's a local, family-owned development company that we're able to work with here tonight. It's not some multinational company who doesn't care about what's going to happen in the community. It's a family of people who have been born and raised here, have other interests in the square and will continue to keep it nice. And I think, from what I've heard tonight, have done a decent job of trying to reach out to the abutters and the affected parties and try to come up with reasonable solutions to move forward. So what I would like to say is that I'm a resident, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a town meeting member. I anticipate that this spring, I'm going to be forced to vote on another budget that reduces services at the public schools, which is of grave concern to me, having three young children. I'm also concerned about cuts in other town services. And bottom line, we're broke and we need revenue. And this is an opportunity to add some revenue. It's not going to solve the whole problem, obviously, but it's a baby step in the right direction. And I would like to believe that all of the challenges that have been delineated so far are resolvable. I know the devil is in the details. I respect all of your work and I think you've done a nice job of guiding the conversation tonight. And I'm hopeful that we can get to a timely conclusion. tonight, and I'm hopeful that we can get to a timely conclusion here that allows the project to move forward. So thank you.
Now, it seems to me that with respect to parking and the use of Church Street, that you make a point that going around and bringing 18-wheelers or 10-wheelers however much into, into Church Street isn't such a great idea. And if there were a loading zone, valet zone in front of the building, it would seem to me that that would, that would reduce the, reduce the use of Church Street fairly significantly. And it, it seems, it seems like a good idea to me. And then, of course, if, if the valet was taken and put in front of the, in front of the entrance, the valet station on Church Street would no longer be, be used, and you wouldn't have double, double-stack parking. You would just have regular old parking, and the valet would go down to the Franklin Street lot. That seems like it's an idea that should be explored seriously, because Church Street's not a very big street.
I agree with you. I think nor the streets leading to Church Street, which will need to be traveled on because it's a one-way road. I'm going to reemphasize that, you know, I work in other communities as, on the other side of the table, and lots of other communities with similar parking problems, I'll say it Wellesley is an example, require these businesses to go out, come up with a plan to work it out together. And I think there's an opportunity here that perhaps, sorry, perhaps the Lyons family, excuse me, the Heinz family touched on. But, but certainly, I think the, I don't think the burden can be on this specific applicant, but I think the burden needs to be on, on our town to put together a program for East Milton Square generally to, to make this work. And some of that's going to have to be working in the residential neighborhoods to incentivize people not to park there.
Yeah, more enforcement. I did, I really liked the idea of a joint valet system. It's not something that we can do. It's not within our purview, but it was, it's a very clever idea if we can get the other restaurant and business owners in the area to work among themselves and with the town to institute something like that. It could solve a lot of problems. So again, not something we can enforce, but something we could maybe encourage.
Well, and it's something we could recommend to the town, such as, I think, resident parking after 6:00 in, in those residential areas is, is sort of a no-brainer.
It seems that way.
And in any event, we've got a, we've made a number of requests to the applicant, and we're not going to, we're not going to act on this application tonight. My feeling is that we've had a pretty good airing of a lot of issues, and we should wait and see what the Board of Appeals does. I'd be happy to go to that hearing, or someone else could, and, and just do a report on what occurred tonight, and see what the Board of Appeals does, and then we can resume this hearing on the 20th.
22nd.
The 22nd, which seems, seems reasonable.
So continue to 6:45 on the 22nd?
I think that, that's what we should do. Bill, what do you think?
Okay. Are we doing it on January 8th? Yeah.
We are, but that is going to be the thier nursery, and we're not going to do it.
Well, they won't have met on ZBA anyway.
Yeah, exactly. It makes more sense to wait for after ZBA.
It makes sense to see what the ZBA does.
I hear what you, I hear what you say.
Two of the Falcones will not be available on the 22nd, but we haven't figured out whether that's an obstacle to meeting them. We have given you a lighting sheet, and we have shown you the location of lights in the parking lot on your plans, so we need to know what else you need. I think you want a spec sheet for the lighting?
Yeah.
Which we have, we just didn't give it to you. So we will provide that after the hearing, and it will be available then, I guess, at the.
And also which lights, so you talked in general about leaving certain lights on, and I appreciate, there's a state law, but which lights would be left on at which hour?
And you want a plan or proposal that specifies what, well, what the overnight lighting when the restaurant's not operating would be like, and how it could be lowered and still provide security, I guess.
And, and you know, take a look at the entering and exiting lights, because we don't really know where these light beams are going to go from entering and exiting cars at night. But if, if in fact they're going to go into the windows across the street, then that's something that perhaps could be avoided.
Is there some way of mitigating that?
Yeah, we're not, and we certainly are.
I mean, if, if, if that's not where the lights would go, then, but we do need that information.
We have, we certainly have heard that concern, and we've looked at the entrance and the exit, and it's not to say that we're not going to continue to, to try to think about it and see what can be done. The reason the entrance and exit are the way they are right now is that it avoids having cars on the street as much, because you have cars enter, it's a one-way street. They enter low in the parking lot, you know, closer to Bassett Street. They enter the parking lot and they park, and then when they leave, they're, they're exiting close to Adams Street. So if there's a sort of waiting period, it's cars in the parking lot waiting to leave their parking spaces. It's not cars lining up in the street. Now, the issue of valet parking, very interesting discussion, because that's right. The downside of valet parking on Church Street is it's going to put all the cars in the Church Street parking lot until they get taken where they're going. The upside of putting them on Adams Street is it's in front, it's on Adams Street, it's the main street. You reduce the amount of cars in the Church Street lot, because you're only going to put cars in there that you could put into spaces, and there's a limited amount of spaces there, but you're going to put them in the other lot and to make sure they go to the other lot. That's definitely been discussed. The issue of cooperation with the other restaurant, definitely been discussed. We wanted to know if you want, if you like the idea, if the neighbors like the idea, if it doesn't make it better. And we heard a lot of feedback on that tonight, probably more than, we did start to talk about that with the Board of Appeals, but haven't fully addressed it. The idea of a valet parking designated space that would also be a delivery space has not been brought up by anybody until Mr. Whiteside mentioned it. That's definitely worth looking at. The town would have to approve that, you realize, because those are public parking spaces right now. So those are the, so, I mean, we, you know, the window design issue, we presumably might be able to come back with some options to show you, if that's what you want us to do, by the next hearing date that you've established. It wouldn't so much be a discussion with the Board of Appeals, but we could come, we could try to submit something, and possibly a couple of options, because I could hear different feedback about what would be best. Some people think a great big window, and some people, you know, some neighbors are not so sure they want the great big window. But the question really is, what would look good and make the side of the building look better?
Yes, and to.
Isn't it?
Yeah, to Brian's point earlier, is it might not have to be windows. It might just simply be something that addresses the fact that that's a blank wall.
I think you made a good point as well, and I think the designer was nodding his head, and that is, if you want to maintain this theater atmosphere inside, you may need some wall space.
Right, exactly. So, so what could you do on the outside that would be attractive?
Something just to make it appealing.
Yeah.
Well, it also could be just phony, phony moldings.
Right.
I mean, there are all kinds of things to do, and that's the reason you have a designer, so he can come up with some options.
Right, exactly. And he's done a lot of designing, so I, he's very creative.
And to appreciate also the fact that people don't necessarily want to look from their living room window into somebody eating and don't want, certainly don't want somebody eating to look back through their living room window. So there are different ways of addressing that.
I hate to keep dwelling on the elevations question, but, well, the engineer understands what you need for elevations. Okay, all right, we don't need to dwell on that, even though I don't, it doesn't matter. So those are, the dumpster, you also want additional follow-up with detailed description of the dumpster enclosure, and you want a permanent enclosure. You don't want fencing with vinyl.
And we want you to look into dumpster characteristics. What else?
And you want the highest quality.
Do they have a parking lot if they're currently using the lights that they anticipate using?
That's a good idea.
I can ask the provider.
Okay.
I'd just like to see them before you have it on piece of paper and say it's okay.
Right. I mean, one way of talking about the lights that I think I like to use is to say, we have a residential street next to this restaurant, so the lighting should be as residential-looking as possible, and as, we're not looking for streetlights at the edge of the parking lot. And then it becomes a question of what design, what aesthetics do people prefer, but it should be as low as possible, as dim as possible, but provide safe lighting, and it should be residential in appearance and in keeping with what people in Milton like, which tends to be sort of, I don't know, colonial or something. I mean, I, that's probably going too far.
But what I also heard, just to, just to provide some feedback to you, I think, I think if you look at the photometric plan, it appears to me that the spillover is going to be less of an issue than some of the concerns I'm hearing tonight are, you're looking out your top, your second-floor window, and you're looking at a light fixture, and it's glaring in your windows. So is there a way to direct the light down and not have a side light coming out?
Yeah, they should be able to direct it down and away.
Effectively, you're going to, you're going to shade that light coming out the sides and direct it all straight down.
Okay, so we will take that back to the lighting, people who are giving us lighting advice.
All, all the lights are able to be equipped with shields for that very purpose, so.
And also the height of the lights is something else we'll want to see. You know, you're not going to need those big Cobra heads up there.
Right. I just want to make sure that we know what, what additional information we need to come back with. The question of outstanding, you know, it's sort of an issue, but the reason we talk about seating capacity in a restaurant is because seating capacity is what's generally used to determine or begin to determine what the parking requirements are. And there are code requirements for a space with seating that will say you can't have more, you know, you're not supposed to have people standing up in a restaurant. You, you have people sitting somewhere, and I remember from liquor license applications that I've looked at, you know, again, there can be some seating at the bar, and then there are seating at seats, and sometimes the bar seating is for people waiting to get into their seat. But I'll, I'll check on what the code requirements are and so forth, but I, I don't believe you can have people standing all over the place.
You've got all kinds of bar seats here. Are those a part of the 120? 140?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's just a question of people standing behind the, the people seated at the bar, as people are often apt to do on a.
They are. I think I really need to check on what the code requirements are and so forth to be able to say, this is what it has, it's supposed to be, this is how it should be enforced, and then if there is some standing allowed in this amount of floor space, then is that a consideration that we need to take into account?
I do have one final parking question. I know it's under the ZBA, but where will the staff park?
We've said to the ZBA that the staff will be required to park in the zone parking that the town requires payment for on an annual basis, and I know that other businesses don't do it the way they should. I can tell you that this restaurant applicant is going to have its employees park in those parking spaces, and they will enforce it with their employees. That can be written as a condition or whatever you want, but we've said that from the beginning.
Site plan approval can actually require that, just like it could require a LA parking plan.
We need to get that plan to show where they are.
I have one more question.
Why don't you come up and?
After the restaurant is closed, what is going to happen with the parking lot? Will it be locked at night? That would be my question.
I would assume not, but. Did they?
Why would we lock it? We don't want Franklin Street now. Well, there have been issues in that parking lot. You know, we're going to be living across from it. I mean, things happen in parking lots. But they park in there now.
You'd be worried about vandalism?
That I'm supposed to be. Yeah, I'm wondering, you know, just crime. I mean, people park there now, but they live there. I mean, the people that park in the lot now are the people that live there. I'm wondering, you know, there's an empty park, is there going to be an empty parking lot at night? Things happen. Just, you know, just a question. You know, I'm concerned about crime.
Okay.
Well, there have been other issues in that lot.
My, my feeling is that you would, you could have a condition that if there were a crime problem, it would be changed.
You could also require security cameras on the exterior of the building.
Or a security camera.
Which might be a little bit friendly.
You've got a security camera. So there would be a security camera. That would deter people pretty well.
Good evening. I found this very interesting, because I've never watched this process the way I've been watching this one, because it is the largest property in East Milton Square. I'm Diane DiTulio Agostino, a town meeting member as well as a former select person. My question is more one of the process, because when I went to the Board of Appeals meeting, I listened and I heard they had two criteria they were responsible to. I recall parking was their main issue that they approved, and there was something else that I can't recall, and I just thought it would be really good if we left here tonight understanding which committee did what, because at the end of the Board of Appeals meeting, they preferred to wait to hear, not just because they did have a shorter timeframe because someone had an obligation, so they didn't get to hear everybody, but they also wanted to hear from the planning board. So I almost felt like, you know, residents as well as the developer and everyone watching at home is getting ping-ponged between two meetings. So if you could explain specifically the process and what, I hear a lot about parking tonight, but if that's under the Board of Appeals, that's really, they will make that decision. So I'd love to hear what your list is that you has, the planning board has jurisdiction over and can actually address. And another major point is, I really think this town has to have a town-wide, I mean, you've done a great job with the master plan, traffic and everything else. The meetings were wonderful, you know, gave the residents an opportunity to speak, which they haven't had in how many years has it been since we've done a master plan? So it was great that you now have your finished product, and people will be reading it, but the Town Traffic Commission really needs to have their own open-house meeting where the chief of police, who has spoken at some of the previous meetings, you know, when those, those aren't the issues for the planning board or the Board of Appeals. Even the issues as far as when trucks are delivering elsewhere, you know, I understand your focus is specifically within this project, and I'd love to hear those specific criteria, such as lighting. It was interesting when we talked about, or I heard talk about the brick building, and I just wanted to mention, doesn't the side of Abbey Park look wonderful? You know, there's so many opportunities, but I did understand why the, the windows wanted to be high in order to give privacy. I also did want to speak because my neighbor for 30 years was the former owner, and I moved in there 35 years ago, and I heard nothing but what they were hoping would happen with this building. So it'd be, I, I don't know if Alex could do this tonight, but as you pointed out, it's not under your jurisdiction, don't you love that word jurisdiction? It's not under your jurisdiction to say what goes into the building, but it would be very educational for myself as well as the town to understand some of the history as far as what the bylaws even allow. I know that I heard that if the outside surface renovations was under 800, I had heard this, that a site plan review might not have been required. So it almost seems like the developer, you know, was willing to work with the planning board and with the residents. So if you could explain that a little bit, because I do know the former owner, you know, was thinking of a big commercial mall, you know, two-story mall. And legally, couldn't a building complex, you know, go in there or a full apartment complex? a building complex, you know, go in there, or a full apartment complex? And when you think of traffic and lighting and parking, you know, if that was a building complex, I recall what happened on Adams Street with Two Adams Street, how that little building, when it was being constructed, the neighbors were going crazy worrying about all the extra traffic. So a building complex or an apartment complex, I mean, would they have to have a site plan? Would they have to go to the planning board? Would they have to go to the Board of Appeals? I think it'd be really educational, and I know, Alex, you probably have that all covered, that you could just summarize it pretty briefly.
Well, you may recall that initially, the business district gave the board, the zoning for the business district gave the responsibility for determining parking for businesses locating in the business district to the Board of Appeals. And they had special permit authority where a building was too close to a lot line, and they could grant a special permit for various reasons. So they have the ability to determine how much parking and the ability to grant a special permit, and of course, if you can grant a special permit, you can always condition it. And so the Board of Appeals has a wide range of opportunity to shape this project in the way they would like to see it shaped. Whether or not they take up that opportunity is something the Board of Appeals will have to decide. Site plan approval, we added to the bylaw after the Board of Appeals had this authority, and a while ago, we determined, we added a provision that said, construction, reconstruction or alteration of more than 800 square feet of a commercial building shall be in conformity with the site plan. And then there is an exception for interior renovation work that makes no change in the exterior of a building is exempted. But my view on the interior renovation work that was intended to be covered by this is when you put up a new ceiling or you change your, not when you gut the building and reconstruct it. So, site plan approval is something added to the applicant's burden here. And site plan approval basically involves design, the design of the parking, not how many spaces there are going to be.
Design of the parking.
The design of it, whether or not, I mean, valet parking, it seems to me, can be said to be part of site plan approval, assuming the Board of Appeals doesn't determine it to be part of parking. And, you know, we are working. It isn't, I mean, people are coming out twice as much as they probably should have to, but at least they're getting the input from two different boards. But we're dealing with design here, and we want to get the best possible design for this project.
Does that include the tree planting?
It would include tree planting.
Because there do seem to be a lot of trees. Can you just briefly explain, because when I heard about demolishing the whole building, what the other, you know, the scenario, if it was an apartment complex?
It would have to be a business. They cannot build an apartment complex there because it's not zoned for apartments. They could ask for rezoning, they could do 40B, but it's not zoned for apartments.
So a commercial, commercial business could go in there. And would that have to have a site plan review?
Yes.
Okay.
That would definitely have to, because that would be, no one could even claim that it was just renovation.
Well, I thank you, because, you know, it's a learning experience, so you've answered a few of my questions, and I do personally know the Falcones, and, you know, it's been interesting that they were always so quiet behind Abbey Park and the building that they own and they take such good care of, that it was amazing how many people didn't realize who they were in town, you know? So, I mean, enough was said just by that alone. But I do think we need that traffic commission meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to, it's 9 o'clock, everyone wants to go home, and we're going to continue this hearing until the 22nd of January at 6:45. And that having been said...
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned.